Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Ankrum Planning Board Meeting of February 1st, 2024. There is attendance via Zoom. I do not believe we have any members, but John, where's John?
I'm
Wanted to wait for John to take the attendance, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel bad, I do the same thing.
Yeah. Here it comes, here it comes. Jay, as soon as you sit down, can you take the attendance?
Joe Prado?
Present.
Aaron Robertson? Homer Irvin?
Here.
Anne Raiders?
Here.
Popro?
Here.
Philip Patton?
Here.
Tom Brownwell?
Here.
Donald Tech?
So we have no members on Zoom. Everybody present, our alternate is absent. And we have a six-member board this evening. All right. Approval of minutes we're going to put to the end. Correspondence, Jay, anything that we should talk about now?
Following the conversation that I got with you, I will be reaching out to see if you can respect all the that will manage stuff.
Okay, anybody have a conflict with any of the applications on the agenda? Seeing no one, hearing no one, oh, we'll go on. Old Business, Green Hill Farm Subdivision. This is an application that's been around for a while. Some issues have developed, so we have asked Grant and Lyons, John Lyons, who is present tonight, to prepare a memorandum for the board, which provides the board with the legal advice with regard to the next procedural steps to be taken in the matter of Green Hill Farm Subdivision. John Lyons and Kim Garrison from Grant and Lyons are here, here tonight. Section 108 3 of the New York State Open Meeting Law allows the board, like ours, to go into a private session with our attorneys for the purpose of obtaining discussion and legal advice. So before we start the regular agenda, I would like to make a motion that the board goes into a closed private session for the purposes of meeting with our attorney and to discuss the legal advice set forth in the memorandum. Do I have a second? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to go into the Building Department Planning.
This wet area in Lot 3, that was, we kind of ratted it up when the, because this portion of the land is currently in that culture. Now, we've ratted it up due to this seep. It was probably close to this type of seep. If we kind of opened it up, it created a bit of that area which comes down into this affected floodplain downstream that is currently in ag and dissipates. So those three items were added to the plan per the condition that the planning board requested. One addition to the plan to mitigate for the spring, so our driveway for Lot 2 around bends around that spring, so I think we talked and we were here for the conditional approval, basically said there any impact to that spring based on heavy placement, because I didn't know where, how big, where turning radius was. If it went right over that, we would make, because once we plotted this on the plan, we found that our grading don't impact it. And this, we had pulver for that predominant seep, spring path that comes down into this kind of low spot. Ultimately, when we were there, we, with the board members, discerned where these seeps and spring ultimately went to. This seep dissipates over the land. There was, it, there was no channel and actually wasn't even discernible down at the roadside swale. So I think it just absorbs into the ground. Again, it's typically after a heavy storm event that those would appear. This spring was continuously running spring. Hence why we had a pulver from van to its natural flow path. And when we were there, we're looking at some evidence of this going into potentially a little pocket wetland or something. Erin, apologize if I put her last name, but we had, she had gone in, we had both walked in to see if this actually pooled anywhere and it's, it's dry in this low spot. So I think the same thing happened this spring. It dissipates and must infiltrate back into the ground before it has ants to pool, because it was flowing, as Miss Irving can attest to. It was flowing right from on-site, and when you go immediately downstream, downhill, this whole area is dry. And it's a, it's a true something. The house, that's, that'll be demolished. Is that a relation? There's no real conveyor between the two. This is almost the low lot, even with the street central here, and there's no, there's no standing water, no wetland vegetation. So really, these are, I would say, these two are ephemeral, meaning only appear after storm events, and neither of those will be impacted from the, from the project. The spring won't be impacted. We're still maintaining the existing conveyor, the low so underneath the road.
Anything else? The board?
What is the distance of driveway to that seep on the middle one, the lower one?
These, the spring?
Yeah.
If I had to run a scale, I'd say it's in neighborhood of 20 feet, thereabouts.
Yeah, but rating doesn't, that doesn't approach on it, so it won't. So it'll stay in its natural state essentially.
Have you read the memorandum?
I have.
John, okay. Basically, it kicks us into other sections of those controls that have the seeds tonight. Right. I think, John, you want to just jump in and?
Well, I think, you know, we laid out for you in the memo where the authority comes from, I, I, I'll argue the next steps. I think that the information from Mr. Didio is, is good. I think there's a step in between that has to be done pursuant to the zoning law, which is characterize the significance of those of spring and the seeps. And then once the board has that and understands that information, then you can decide whether they need additional protection than what's been provided on the map thus far, or whether the protections that have been provided as described by Mr. Didio are sufficient or determined then to be significant, then there wouldn't be a need to, to change anything on the plaque. So I think the next step is to evaluate the quality of those resources.
So I guess you've got to get back to us with some evaluation, I guess, so we can review it and?
Well, again, I guess I would like to do that now, because in assumption Erin and Colleen aren't here to discuss.
I know, Erin, Erin is out on the first one matter and on the town board, got it.
And this is something, by the way, that I, that we would want to get, if you're going to reduce this to writing at some point, I think it would be helpful to, I think, as possible, asking another consultant to take a look at that information you're submitting so that we can get an independent opinion.
So are we talking about? Are we talking about, so the, the section of code talks about the hydraulic significance of it and the ecological, ecological significance of it. So we're looking about a hydrogeologic study, because again, these are, as Miss Irving, you can chime in at any point to discuss what it did witness on the property, whether or not there's any ecological or hydrogeologic significance here. From an engineering standpoint, we've done line delineations for the past 18 years. There's no wetland vegetation of any significance. There's no herbology habitat of any significance. These are seeps that happen with ephemeral storm events, and you have a seep here that trickles out into, again, nowhere. It doesn't go into a, go into a significant habitat or critical environmental habitat. I think we have to refer here to, this is just for the subdivision. All these lots are subject to abbreviated site plan review in the future when any development is proposed. We're just trying to subdivide lots. Period.
Yeah, I understand that, and we're concerned that there may be something here, but we're not going to be able to address properly abbreviated site plan.
Because it might require relocation of a lot.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Mitchell Kuzrow, the attorney for the applicant. So these plans are submitted in October. I, I have a little bit of a problem with the delay that's going. Right now, we have a professional telling you that there's no impact and that there can't be any impact. He's on the record stating that. I'm not sure why we need earlier day. There's been people on the agenda last month, and we were told no. I kind of forced the issue to get us on the agenda for this month. The approval was given, you know, I think four months ago. Is, if, if the rational basis that you have, that you're not ready to make a decision or you think you need more, I'd like to put it on the record, and if there isn't, I'd like to put that on the record, because I just don't see what the value is of further delays.
Well, when this first came up, we had the revised map. We asked Mr. Didio to come back and discuss this with us in November, and it was a no-show, and he said, just sign the flat. So that's what brings us here a month past, and?
With all due respect, he's here now answering your questions, this is what you asked. So I understand that history, and I'm not disagreeing with it. And I get, you know, good reason why you wanted to come back, and why he's here, and he's answering all the questions. Again, you had the, this site plan, you've had now for at least three months. If you thought that you needed some further review of it, it could have been done. On the record, an engineer telling you that there's no possible mid, you know, impact that's going to happen.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know that information, testimony from engineers and other applicants consultants at times. Now, the, the board doesn't trust professionals that appear to be, you know, it's also standard operating procedure for the board to have its own engineer check engineering plan, its planner to check application. So this is not something that, I think that it's, Mr. Didio's information is welcome. I would love if he put that in, and then we can take it to the next step.
That was exactly what I was going to suggest. If you feel the expertise were on their side, tune in writing and watch somebody reviewing. I don't know if we're asked to be tested measure or whatever, but we'll go to the next step.
Yeah. I'm not sure exactly what we need, but there is guidance in the zoning law, and the board can, you know, move forward. If, you know, tonight, if you want to let us know, we're going to submit anything, any or not.
Well, so let's go to another major point. This, anyone who wants to build a, has to come back before this point. They may build here, they may not build here. What is the purpose of doing this now if they have to come back anyway? So right now, you know, this should, in my opinion, this should, the driveways and all shouldn't have happened. This was a subdivision application. It's not site plan review. So they're going to have to come back, even if they submit the exact, okay, they have to come back to you and say, this is what we want. What I'm asking the board is, you have an engineer, you have an expert that tells you that there's not going to be any. You're going to have your second bite at the apple anyway, under your own law. Don't further lay my client to try and get this out there. There's just no reason. I'm sorry?
I think we're trying to do something where we're not, in that if an issue does come up or bound to change, it'll be much more difficult to do that in the future than to try to handle it right now.
No, these will be changed. And we can, we can say ration. This spring goes down into this floodplain. This spring goes down and disappears, doesn't appear in this, as we saw when we walked away. Doesn't even appear in the sites, which, this spring is adjacent to property line and comes down, disappears in this. So based on building setbacks alone for primary residents, this driveway would only improve condition. So if the first condition of the, of the previous site plan review, that that driveway be moved so that it further, by all means?
Well, I feel it's on 10 feet, and if somebody would insist to come back and the lot sold, you're not the engineer, and they said, this is what we want, this is what you approve. Then we have a baton in our hands to try to correct what we want to correct now.
Do they not, do not have the jurisdiction to say that we want to further protect this with subdivision? If not, a previous site plan review, we're not approving the driveway location, not approving house location. We're approving subdivision. You can change the driveway. You force them to change that driveway. You can tell them to change the house location if you see it fit. We're, we showed probably more than we should have showed. Ultimately, we should have showed a driveway, come in, and house, 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 and we've done three months of this. At the end of the day.
This is typical subdivision. People put houses high up on on the steepest part, and, you know, we want to see the driveway, they can get up there, and, you know, this place was set there, and relatives, so.
Yeah, which, again, we could have shown it easy. We, we showed a transparent way of here's what we do. We cut houses right up on the road and bend in and out and up. Again, the plan that we go now, it's going to have an impact on either the seeps or the rain. We would like to just put the, and again, I was going, and what I said, I don't feel I need to go here. The condition in the resolution says to shoulders and the seeps on the plant. That was one. I didn't want to further spend my client's money by saying, I'm going to go to the planning board and say, well, I ultimately satisfy condition. Yes, the portion that says that you have the ability to look at springs and seeps, in my mind, is during previous cycle.
So, so to answer your question, we, my client doesn't want to have to expend money when he doesn't know where the future owner is going with this. And it's on the record, it's your code, that they have to back the site. So you're not setting a standard that it's approved as is, because you're, you're, we're agreeing that has to be site plan approval at a later date. We're on the record stating that. And that's what your code says. So I, I don't see the downside whatsoever, except for the look at more. And, and, you know, to your turn point about you want to hear what he has to say, and you want to now get your other engineer, if that was the case, that could have been three months ago. So, you know, in all due respect, I, I, I'm saying, it seems.
Had this three months ago, it would have been three months ago. So let's not go back to November.
Well, what I'm back to is asking you tonight to sign the approval based on all the information that you have, including tonight's update. Including the engineer giving you his expert opinion on those three items that found. That's what we're asking.
That's all.
Well, I'm, my position is the same. I, I think that the board needs to, the board can make a decision whether you're willing to punt this to be the plan approval. I think it is, given the constraints on this lot, I think it is a possible concern about having to move lot lines. If the drive has to be moved, I don't know anything about the value of these resources, but I think ultimately, this is going to have to be done at one time or another. I think probably the concern on the part of the app, I'd rather have somebody else pay for exploring, for exploring this issue rather than doing it himself. But I think board needs to assess itself as to when it doing, when should you do this in the process to protect the resource.
Well, again, we did explore. We explored it in the field, on the ground. We looked at what consisted of, and there were no fence flags that, with the exception of the driveway cutting over top of the, the spring, I mean, it's I, I think it's, ultimately, it's delaying something unnecessarily, because again, you're not giving away the farm by a food being moved subdivision. The lot line will not need to change. They could revise, but why are we going to revise the way that may not be?
Only because of the late conflict, and there's only 10 feet in the seep.
There's no, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that gives a setback.
15 feet?
No. There's no. There is none. No setbacks.
There's actually 175, that back to this.
Well, we couldn't. It's not changed, well. Does it, 175 feet, one, the third benefit, bottom of the wall, most streams, kind of seeps, rollables, all the hardy one.
It goes under Article 5 subsection.
All board unofficially, we have some of these digital information. They get a yes or no or a no. Some really like, you'd rely on a consultant? Yes. Stay in mode, rely on a control.
All right, I, I can say I'm sort of interested today. We feel better about ourselves, which is permanent. That was sort of coming along, you're very helpful. Yeah, like the word, because I said, we have a law, I do.
That's just being facetious.
Yeah, I think we need to cover that some.
Yeah, I mean, it says, it triggers a thing that says we should do this. It's a, we, we were missing not, that's important, but we, that would be inappropriate.
A18, I'm, sub, the code does not say 25 feet. They're, not section 5, subsection A18?
No, it's A, the subsection A3C.
There's a new version of the code, which.
No, this is based on the 20.
Yeah, it's under, under, now, since the second, that it's separate. Okay, thank you. So I, I guess my question would be, what is it that the board is looking for? I, I hear something in writing and then have your engineer. I don't know what that means. Is that a geologic study? Is it a hithotology study? I'd like to know what it is that our client ultimately has to produce, or will be by yourself. Or is it, can I meet your John, so we review it and talk about it and? And?
Royal act of force. It's the ecological value, I think that is what's most important to the board, so I think it's probably more likely that the Tony is to be looking at it for the board rather than the engineer.
I would have a problem deciding. I, we hired him.
Yeah. So are we meeting them out there and putting something in writing and then going over?
And I think that my suggestion would be for you to put something in writing. Will, a consultant will provide, have written to the consultant, and then will be guided by the consultant of whether a field visit is necessary, or whether, you know, whether they're able to make a decision based on the information that you provided.
So this may not be resolved now, if that's the case.
It depends on the timing is, I mean, if you can get us something soon and we can get a consultant online, the possibility that it could be resolved.
What I propose, what if we move driveway? And find a driveway route that is 25 feet away from this spring and on the upside and represent that to the board? Would that satisfy the board?
I think it's still the question about the importance of the spring, the seeps of the property.
Understood. The difference is that's inexorably linked to whether or not it impacted the property.
Well, it skips that. The first question is whether they're important, because if they're not important, protection doesn't matter.
Right.
And so that's the step that, you know, your proposal, thank you, but your proposal skips a little step, evaluating the value of the resources.
And if the resource mountain be able, what would be the next step to provide?
To figure out what, to figure out, I think the first step is to figure out whether the plan proposed poses any threat to those resources and whether further protection is warranted. That would result in changes to the plan. If, if it isn't warranted, then that plan is probably going to be efficient, and the plot can be signed by the chair. And only if it comes out that, number one, that they're important, number two, they need more protection than they're getting into the current design.
If, if I may, and I'm not sure this works precisely, I would prefer, and who of me, in, in avoiding the back and forth, I would prefer if the board engage whoever it is that they're going to engage to review these springs and seeps and instruct them to contact our office so that we can immediately conduct the site with it, review it together onsite, and come to a consensus about the importance of these, of these resources, so that, I don't sense like a Tony review, but come back next month. There's a disagreement of one reason or another, and then we end up having to lies, and we're three months down with one. But if, if possible, I prefer to just put it to bed, because it will be put to bed, I'm telling you. So I, I just want to get it done.
I understand your desire to do it that way, but I, I just don't know about how it's done from the consultant. I, I just don't know about how it's done from the consultant standpoint to be able to tell you tonight.
You don't even know if they're gonna take this on as a.
What's that?
You don't even know if they're gonna take this on as a.
No, no, although I'm fairly confident that they will, but um. Okay, well, you know, what I will tell you is look, there's, there's no inherent desire on the board to be making this table line. As there, I understand Minch's concerns about the past since November, there, without getting in, I mean, there were a lot of things, circumstances that entered. But we understand the client wants to get to the point of completion. We want to be to your main, the board also must have fulfilled responsibilities under the law. But if you, if you can get us some, I'd like you to get something in writing. I'm not looking to add things to your plate, but I would, I do want to create a record that I think will benefit you and the board going forward.
Can I have a minute?
Sure.
Chair, so we'll get you something in writing by next week. The concern that I have is your comment that you don't even know if you have an engineer to look at it. We're going through an exercise that I think is not even necessary because it has to be done again.
We'll have an engineer to look at it.
Okay. Okay, okay, I, I misunderstood. Okay, so we'll have it with it to you. What we're asking is if with some due diligence, we can get your engineer to look at it quickly and then they can maybe have that conversation. We could back, be back here next month for, for assuming that.
I will, we need that answer submission, that kind of stuff. We can get the information, that actor to the board. We're not, I spent most of my life on that side of the fence, so.
So put in the record that we're looking away, extension, you know, we'll grant the extension to.
Yeah.
If we need, right now, we, we might.
When more to meet.
I think.
You will the extension.
I think the conditional whatever would end around this, so that's still within.
No, once seven is act.
Words off, rising the grand in extension, so it would be good. Well, we could just vote on that.
Yes, that's why I'm asking.
And I believe that's June or just for everyone to be on the same page.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, never mind. April Opera House ads. Please come forwards.
Uh, hi there, I'm Jeff Lusso, co-director of the Andrew Mopple House. This is Kim Archer, architect on the project. And I think today mainly just a sort of check-in day to, uh, we all, to make sure that we're on track.
Let me just, um, you were at the zoning board.
Yes, I feel.
Okay, and then you made a decision, you made a presentation or? We, uh, it's, we, we did make, we made a presentation and it is moving forward to a public hearing on, I think it's February 6th. So I believe that, so that's one update is that they had that meeting and it's moving forward to that public here. And so I think that definitely, you know, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a better understanding of that approval and and the next steps on the, on the area variances. Um, I think my tracking from the last time we met was that the two primary issues of, were two things that came up. Uh, one was um, the septic and we provided JL with information about septic. So that uh, that, that addressed what repaired the remediation of and upgrading of the septic system. And a letter from the, uh, the, the consultant who did the design for the septic plan, basically attesting or speaking the, the, the and with a belief that it will totally adequately serve the purposes of, of the.
You're saying repair, is this all a little bit of old system that you got?
I mean, it's a repair, but it was like, there, there was a system there, but it was.
It is a system there, whatever they, they call it. That's just the nature of it.
Yeah, so, I mean, so I don't know if you received that information about, I think so, it sounds like, you know, so I don't know if there are, are there further questions or concerns about that particular aspect?
No, I mean, it's, it's. Having that letter in there, yeah.
Okay, cool. And then the other piece was, I know that the front step, the front was an issue or concern because it actually crossed over the property line. That has been redrawn. Maybe Kim, you can speak to that.
Sorry, the original house had a um, cover over a front porch. So our proposal actually removes the uh, canopy and remove the front porch and put just a small step that.
You're not into that.
Exactly.
So I think, was there any use for that?
No, I guess we just wanted to understand a little bit more of the timeline. Um, I guess now that the zoning board's been reviewing our plans, um, there'll be a town hearing and then I think we'll be on the, for next month in March, we again hear um, based on information from the, the, the public hearing. That's kind of what I understand it. Um, are we kind of scheduled for the?
It's our procedure. When they come back to us, is this a public hearing or is it just?
Yes, so it is a special use permit. There will be a public hearing for the planning board. I did see both Nan and John Lyons about application. Um, Nan had suggested doing a conditional approval at the ZDA level and then sending it back to the planning board. John Lyons, um, interpreting the law, recommended the zoning board hold the public hearing, ask the applicant to leave the 60-day timeline and then send it back to the vending board to then hold their public hearing, um, because the SERA should, or no approval should be done until SERA has been completed.
Who's lead agency?
Um, the planning board declared their intent to be lead agency. So unless the planning board doesn't want to conduct the environmental review, it's probably.
Probably should, yeah. So the, the next I'm just looking at the calendar, the next what is it, February 26th next?
And um, the zoning board appeals did vote, um, to schedule the public hearing on all the projects for that February 26th meeting.
That the meeting will have decision.
That is correct.
Our next meeting will be seven. Um, I guess you give us a first update or things along, I guess it's a public hearing for following month. Great. Um,
I would I would often reserve not a visual public ring on the board that has gone through that was declare the application complete.
Yeah, that could happen more. They come back here, they get your plans in time. That could happen on the seventh. So I mean, it's, it's a, you know, potential. You know? So they may extend it, we don't know, you know? We get snowstorm, we do all kinds of things to change, so there's no guarantee in this. Um, we'll move it along for you as quickly as we can. It seems like it's going in the right direction.
So I guess I, the other was just we wanted to have everything that you knew was to do forward.
Um, so I did receive and distribute the information about septic. Another issue that came up in discussing this application was parking because there is limited or no parking on site. Were there any issues that the planning board saw in reviewing the application for its special use?
Is this an intensive location for the most part? Only board should be dealing with parking issues.
It seems like that it's could possibly be three more cars if everybody has something to say, it's like, how do we be three more cars? When you think about the 50 or 60 car that come to the show, in my.
We're not actually changing the occupancy of the house. It's gonna remain three bedroom house. With the unit and installation.
Yes, yeah, they don't have a problem with parking.
So I would clarify that I don't think the ZDA has reviewed the parking. I think that they're just looking at the area there.
Well, you may want to make a note to them about the parking and let them let, put it on their list of areas that there's no parking variant. Because obviously you can't make anymore. Let's just keep up. Keep it straight.
So we would make the zoning board of appeals admit a determination or interpretation of the zoning line in regard to whether the use has changed or the intensity has changed and whether. Okay.
Is there a parking right now on the second?
I would say there's, well, there's, there's one.
Is that family that was living in?
They had, they had multiple cars.
Okay, so did they park down in the parking area?
No, they parked either in that one spot along the side of the road and on both sides.
They probably can't, the use hasn't changed, the parking hasn't changed, so it's not, it's not changing for what it is. Correct, it's like your license, they're not there every day.
Is this the building where a conference room or something?
There's a meet, there's a part of it with me, or yeah.
Yeah, they let them render an opinion on what, what. Hey.
Thanks.
Thanks, we'll see you in a talk. Got a little business. Riffle.
Great center. I'm usually on the other side of the zooms.
So you have to take.
Yeah, I can see. Yeah, that's the one thing I didn't come through on.
I can tell.
Look, my guys, you got it.
I know. He reached that. Was there a screen? Be surprised to hear.
Those are two, those are separate, um. Okay, yeah, those are, that's a separate decent land.
Can you point out to me where the house is?
Yes.
To know that, like, yeah, I can.
I didn't listen, I'm here. So this is the house. It's actually, that's like a red bar and it goes down road and that's a clock and we have a house, the lab makers. So that, that parcel is the lab maker's and uh, you there, we're there in 2021. And then in 2028, we do, I bought, I had a rental van, by the way, that large flies on the door.
You mean all of all this?
Yes, right.
Yeah, yeah, it's what it does.
Um, so he, he has also provided an the page that has the parking that has the septic location, um, that will not include an impact.
Well, that's a, it's a compliance.
Everything in the system is more than a three bedroom house. Is that what we're talking about, three bedroom? Actually, why didn't he talk about it?
Well, we had as a four bedroom. Um, sorry, my husband in the paperwork, so um, I believe we're three bedroom house, but I, I have a look in the packet here. Four, okay, so yeah, we, so we just updated and updated system because the old owner, Mark Daryl, that was there at the 20th a smaller septic, three bedroom house. Uh, so we updated the septic to make sure it's built in place for which is better as to where.
Part of this letter. Did you increase the septic tanks 15 gallons?
Yes.
Yeah, the next, the next page where it says the big twelve.
Yes, so we went for five. It's good for five. Yeah, it's good for five, just because there's a little bedroom that I use as like my storage office. And for us, we like, I sometimes like them.
Yeah, got a little confusing there. Okay, the question from the board. Think that'll be pretty complete, yeah, it seems to be. All by itself, so. There's a public hearing.
Where's the next step?
Any comments, any comments, I am doing, still much question. I just, the order is there on here. I almost got a stupid question, what else?
Oh, yeah, so we have, we have some bottom jack. We're kind of far from bottom jack, but they're the closest house, so.
Four, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, the old silo, yeah. The silo is a pain in my butt, but it's beautiful. My cycle is nice always. Oh gosh, hold on by, great photos, uh, Polaroids from the eighties from before it was.
No comments from the public? We have motion to close the time here.
Wait, 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 we have.
Okay, did we go, yeah, with someone, so yeah.
Wait, see, wait, wait, we.
No, 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 this is the first time that this is.
I will.
For that, Scott.
I'm sorry.
Right, so start providing, learn, and kind of do the lead agency.
Okay.
Can I get a moment, I'm really busy. Okay.
There.
All in favor. Now, turn around here. I had a motion.
For, for the March seventh, you, second, second.
All in favor.
So, who was the motion and who was the second one?
Who was the second over?
I was.
And do you need anything from?
Talk to you, whatever else needs fees or not, we, whatever. They'll fill you in. We'll see.
Thank you.
Probably just say. Ronnie Brook.
Nice to see you all again.
Happy New Year, I'd like to make a sign.
So, um. We've been working, Jay, uh, to put the additional information together since, uh, we addressed the fire pit. Got the topographical map, we. A number of other things added to the plans, we got the engineer stamp on the plans. Um, submitted it all. And at time of action. Uh. They changed the status of the process a little bit, I think. We're now in an abbreviated process, no longer a special use.
Is that true, Jay, that we have, okay.
So we don't need special use permit, we're now in abbreviated process and, uh. I think that, uh, we don't need a public hearing, is that right?
That's good.
Right.
So we can move this, can I, if we like? Yes, okay, so is there anything else in your opinion?
Um. I believe that I did on provide the board with a draft, um, resolution for this. And had reviewed, given on the soft. Access, on, buzzed with. It is sufficient. It can, any changes that are needed on. By this department will be able to be dealt with, uh, during the building. It's, so it should be able to be approved.
They'll deal with that in the fireplace, right? We just, yeah, well, right. So. Everybody, any thoughts?
I look at everything you said online, right?
I think they have questions about the reflectivity and the amount of loss of those generally.
All right, I'm not even aware of this.
Okay. We get to pay the budget, we have to do.
So I did give a news alert, but. I did look at that and I don't think that it's a type two action because the, um. The solar that does fall within a type two action would be if it was on like a brown seal. So I think it's an unlimited action. What should we?
We don't need it.
Make a motion?
Um, no, so you, you do need to do, um, the.
That's all. I will be.
Do you want to review?
If you will do so on part of those.
Yeah. Will the proposed action create a material conflict within a adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in age in the use or identity of use of land?
No. No. I mean, it'll conform with that.
Will the proposed action compare the character or quality of be this thing to you, Jay?
No, no. I think it will change the character, but it's minor. I mean, you will see these panels, but I think it's minor.
So no, small and.
And all the.
Yeah, okay.
You have panels already, right?
Excuse me.
You have panels already.
Not installed.
No, you need to. Four, I mean, there's been panels there close to the building already, right?
Oh, yeah, there's, uh, there's, there's some solar thermal panels, yeah.
So, or not. I don't think it's going in, we'll be once we put up long. You know, it's not like. Drop chain.
Right, and it's up the hill, you can't really see it that much.
Just the thing that you're not planning on expanding down the road, right?
No, because the, uh, the, it's designed to meet the need.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, to stay within a hundred and ten percent, so it's a hundred percent of their current usage and so it.
There would be no need.
No need, no need to make it bigger.
Unless they. Increase the size of their operation.
Yeah. I, maybe that's pretty likely at this point, uh, but, yeah, you know, if they, they started using a lot more power and needed more, you'd have to come back and ask you for permission to expand it at that point. Um, and you go through the evaluation of the relationship between the production and the usage, so. But at this point, this is a perfect size, it fits nicely, it's plot, and because we're elevating it, it's gonna allow them to continue to use the pasture and, uh. It's a good, uh, shape.
True, yeah.
And University of Michigan, uh, Minnesota studies of these kinds of systems have found that it has a beneficial effect on the cow's health. It lowers their blood pressure. But, uh, but it increased milk production, that was one of the funny, uh, reasons, but it's a, it's something now, they call it agri voltaic.
Will the agri be pleased about?
The egg will taste better, I'm sure.
That's Jay.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a federal environmental area?
No, no.
Will the proposed action result in an address change in the existing level of traffic or if that exists in the infrastructure for mass transit, biking and walkway?
Same much.
Will the action cause an increase in the use of energy and then fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No, just, yeah.
Seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public, private, what is the question? Seven B, public, private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action compare the character or quality of important or political or architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
They've marked us on this.
Oh, so, no. No.
Oh, I, I mind it, yeah.
What column are you looking at?
I didn't write that.
Yes.
In that now.
Yeah, well, then, say.
Will the proposed action, well, going back to. What is the board's thoughts?
No. Well, do they have to, uh. If they like, change that initiative, so they're one, that if they. Um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll change it initially.
I will give them this one. Because they weren't supposed to fill out our. Okay, okay. Um, will the action result in average change in natural resources? For example, wetlands, water, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna.
No.
No.
Then, this action, an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
Yeah.
Eleven, will the question create a better to environmental resources for?
No.
Okay, so. Based on the fact that. All the answers are no or small impact. Did the board like to make the negative?
Motion.
Sorry.
So who may as well? Motion, negative. Second, all in favor?
Oh, that's a negative direction of impact.
Yeah, you could.
I'm catching up.
Just, yeah, what was like? Negative.
That's it.
All right. Do you have any?
Yeah, uh, everybody should have a copy.
Shuttle use and the finer.
Sure. Everybody had a chance to review. The resolution.
Yes. Will we read it into the record or?
Um, if everybody has had a chance to review with. It doesn't seem to be better, but would you like it written?
I don't think it would. Has the asshole been given, been given with?
No, they haven't.
Do we have one? We have to, um, the planning board has drafted a resolution. For a review of the site plan for, well, the. We just, we just breathe my voice down, so. Everybody on the board under resolution. You're going to be the mandator, so we can make a motion.
Can I say that? What's your question?
What's that?
So then the, um, the blank spots that are revealed in, or claimed to be. But I see that it was a, I. Or that it was enlisted, I've been. Planning board made a deck and then, um. A motion for approval and whether we bring that for.
Yeah, Jay, you were filling all the dates.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I have a resolution, make a motion. Make a motion. In favor based on the resolution and. I, right, you're approved, please, Jen, don't pardon for your next steps.
Uh, thank you for your cooperation and support next day for all this, I think it improved our application and, uh. When we need to turn on the system, we'll bite your all off, yeah. Living cutting.
I'm playing it all around.
Yeah, yeah, you're not.
Hello. I am back with a real site planned and a, it shows a stream buffer area. And also with the survey signed and sealed. With some poking with a stick, yeah. Um, and, uh, it was determined by Ed Ferrato that the. Uh, bathroom was permissible. And the septic system was permissible and both of those are permitted already. So at this juncture, we're just asking for permission for the, uh, for the office space into an apartment.
Okay.
Well, I understand, I'm trying to.
Uh, there's a, there's an, a neuron that shows them put together somewhere in there.
Yeah, I see that, but can I?
Bathroom in the box.
Yeah.
But where, so just. If you could just tell me where.
Absolutely, well, so. Now, I have satellite images.
Well, the. Satellite image.
Little block out right there.
Yeah.
Is the apartment and then the bathroom, again, just within the footprint, yes. The.
Okay.
Yes.
So Nancy is going to do that?
Yeah, right, that's fine, I'll, I'll remember.
Okay. The bathroom entrance into the bathroom will be from there.
Will, will be in touch.
Okay. From there.
So you can access the bathroom from there, only from here.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I understand that. And then the street buffer area, did you put in the? The dimensions?
For this, uh, you know.
How many feet is it?
That's a hundred and fifty foot buffer, even though, because it's an agricultural use, we're only twenty five foot, but put the full. Dimension.
So it's a hundred and fifty feet.
Each side, it's a hundred and fifty feet each side, so it's a total three hundred foot across. Yes, that's the. Side of the, it's a street base, it will become the apartment.
So, it's an accessory apartment because it's in a other building? Even though it's gonna be a primary residence?
Accessory apartment in existing, sure, not a one or bedroom house.
Yeah.
Is, is what Ed directed us to.
Yeah, whatever he determined in the page, I think that's the two story, right?
No, just one. No, there's nothing, nothing said, you know, just a peaked roof. Nothing above. It's over about a three crawl space, but that's the extent of the elevation.
Yeah, this is raised above the barn floor.
Yes.
Oh, I I think that's what I was.
Yes. Yes, it's only a, you know, about that.
And there's not haze door.
No, no, there's no, no hazard in that structure whatsoever, it's an. Accessory building.
You have a couple windows in the barn, is it?
Uh, yes, into the indoor arena.
Okay, I just wanna understand that this is the outside.
Yes, correct.
So the whole barn is just the barn?
Yes, correct, that's, that's the extent of the apartment.
Board have any other questions, thoughts, considerations? I think we've got us what we've asked.
The narrative during.
Thank you. No napkins.
The design is created so. Um, Jerry, what's on that?
All aspects of this project fall within the type two list, so. Because the one element of the testing farm operation, the horse warding is. Part of something that would be an agricultural operation or that's type two action. And then as a family residence, which Ed had qualified this project as. Is also their type of action, so I think the planning board has this as a type two action. Not requiring environmental review. It would be.
We, you know, we need to make a determination, proceed with it.
Um, did. Is that what the planning board to do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all we need is a motion to. Any questions?
First of all, has everyone had a chance to read the draft resolution?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any comments?
Well, we just gotta fill in the dates and. Where is this? Hey.
So, no additions. I'll get some more info.
Yeah, we're going to approve resolution, we have his hand. Sorry. On fair.
Thank you very much.
They want us to find. Yeah, I could be like. Twenty five times. We do have.
Yeah, we do have one, I'll there. And all of them.
Not something that. Yeah, I wanted to get through that and meet and stop first.
My time, right, Jake? Um, my name is Doug Larson.
I'm Tori.
This is my, my Tori.
Hi.
Uh, I went to go see Ed at jail about. A pre-application conference, he said, just come to the next meeting. Um, about a project that we'd like to talk to you about, so this is pre-application conference before we fill out paperwork. Um, we're the people who bought Glenda Hermans's house in downtown. We bought Glenda Hermans's house to Route Eight in Ancomdale and renovated it um, about two years ago. So um. We really like Ancomdale, I'm an architect, interested in the fact that it's a national register, it's national register, and I like historic architecture.
The red, the red house?
It's like brown, yeah, yeah, dark brown. Um. Yeah, exactly, that's me. That's me. So we're um. We've taken the liking to Ancomdale and. The house across it used to be owned by Annie Walman Jones and Murdock Morrison has been on the market for a while. Yes, so we have an accepted or in a contract on that house. Um. And I think the house is interesting um, because it has properties, right now it's a single family residence with an accessory dwelling. Um, but we've been looking at the zoning code and the comprehensive plan that was written in oh nine and nineteen. And I think. To become mixed use. So I'd like to explore that with you, what, what it could be mixed use, it's almost four thousand square feet. And it's compartmentalized already into as many as five compartments. Um, and I just cut some doors through. Um, so what we'd like to do is explore. Some things in the, in the comprehensive plan to bring economic activity back to the hamlet. Get some apartments. And restore the hamlet. So we need to apply to have two apartments upstairs. Uh, there's a third one which could be an office and then have burgon tile on the first floor, low impact. Two. Once you go to three, it's.
It's a multiple.
Then it's permanent, you know, so.
That's why I asked the question.
Right. So I think we're ready for a site plan review. Um, and all the things that comes with, I started filling out the paperwork, but Jay also come talk to first.
So I'm sorry, is this the house? The dude's on the one side. Did I get on that one? Oh, that one, okay, yeah. That's good, okay.
That's so slow, it's like now.
Right next to the.
Exactly, on the left side.
So you're probably, you don't know. That's the bathroom.
We look at it. Very cool. It's got sort of that old, very yard.
And you know, one thing that came around people talking, you know, two, three of them.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think these that you're probably gonna ask me about are the parking itself, right? Um, and eventually signage, one of the businesses. Um, I can't answer what the businesses are because we don't property, we haven't rented anybody. Um, so we're, I don't know.
Yeah.
How, when we know what the business is, they'll come back, I would imagine.
Yeah, I've seen those on.
Yeah, I read the code about so. Yeah, so I read the code about that and there's a big preamble that the planning board has the. Authority to adjust the parking calculations, right? So if you um, take it literally, uh, with two apartments, it's three pieces per apartment. Three per, that's what it says in the zoning code. And the office is by square foot, there'll be two and a half parking spaces, I don't know how you get down the car. And the retail will be sixteen, so.
A three is right.
I don't have the.
I do. Well, it seems high.
Well, I've read it and that's, you know, so if you add it all, it adds up to twenty five. And but it does say. Well, that's why we came to talk to you. Um, it does say the planning board can adjust it, and I think in the hamlets, there's precedent for adjusting the parking. And it also says, if there's parking within four hundred feet, you can take the number down and there's that big lot that. I don't actually know what their agreement is, there's a lot line right down the middle.
Yeah, I think that's intended if it's a municipal lot, you can't go use somebody else's property.
How, but that agreement is between the two of them, but they must have some kind of easement.
There's a farm in the back too. Yeah, so I don't know about the accesses, you may have to look at the tax map and see. I wouldn't be too keen to use somebody else's property in the parking. It was remissly, remissly owned, that is a different story.
Yeah, it does say within four hundred feet of the visible parking, you can adjust the parking, but I'm thinking, this is on a corner. We can do a curb cut on the county route three and use some of the rear yard for parking. So what's a reasonable number, you know, maybe twelve, two per apartment. The employees. Um, and just, and use the front yard for the visitors.
But your users are gonna give you a certain amount of diversification of the parking.
Yes.
That typically former people, either going home five or six, businesses operating from ten to five, so. There is a diversification factor which we don't want. Look at, depending on what you, you pick a restaurant, then it's a different sport.
So I would, you can fix it to the rear yard, it's a beautiful garden, but we could sacrifice maybe half of it. For parking and we could do a curb cut on the county route three, right next to the, the red barn has a curb. Um.
It might be an easement or something coming through that common drop.
That's right, it's possible.
We could do some more research.
There's a gate, farmers, there's a gate out to the farmer's. Um, on the um, south side of the garden, so maybe there is some kind of. Maybe easement, but I haven't really looked.
But how big is the office?
Um, it's very big. I have this, I have these, you can look at these. Like a little dive and.
So you are the own house. We did. It was with your.
Yeah.
Do you know the.
Yes, second floor, I have all the information on the subject. The good thing is that uh. And the office is lower. Than, than a bedroom. So, and if you look at the plans of the house, it's almost a five bedroom house. The ones to. So you actually can park on top of the subject, this is signed properly, but. So I have an engineer ready to look at this. Tell, you know, help, help size the uses for the septic and plan up a lot. So the accessory dwelling right now is the, the gold colored area, there's this exterior staircase up there. And the blue. Is um. That, that porch that's in the picture, you can enter from the rear and the staircase, it goes up to two bedrooms and it's not connected to the rest of that.
So upstairs, it's just two bedrooms, but no living room?
Uh, the living room's gonna be on the first floor. There's a big room in the back of the house. Exactly. And then the whole first floor can be once you do business. Depending upon who's interested. Could be a low impact, it could be. Um.
Yeah, could be a law office, a real estate office, there's all sorts.
So you're two apartments and how big are your apartment?
Two apartments upstairs and one or two businesses downstairs is what we're thinking, yeah.
Was it office or?
We were thinking of one of, it, it's a retail space, maybe they want a little room upstairs as an office, maybe, you know, just sort of leaving that as a. Uh. Open for right now, so, yeah.
There's a need for this because when we bought Glenda's house, people were all calling up and saying. Will you rent us an office in your building? But we can rent us an apartment. So we know there's a need and um.
Interest.
Or to the problem.
Yeah, I mean, it seems feasible, I mean, you know.
Right, I mean, that is um.
Whatever you can do that's reasonable with the parking would certainly.
Um, and tasteful. It's a, it's a big house.
Yeah.
You know, it's just. Yeah.
They can, they're pretty good care, it's old. You know, and things an old house has with rolling floors, but. And charming and there's a lot of.
If you drop a marble in the kitchen, is that the living room?
Sorry.
If you drop a marble in the kitchen, that'll.
Pretty much. And then back again and then side piece and.
Um, it's part and parcel of the old house. Um, and the, the, there's a current RV is putting in. Um, energy efficient cars.
Do you full time up here in the city?
We're up here Thursday through Sunday, so it'll be tough.
Yeah.
So um. So we're really, we're actively helping to be a part of, helping fix it up, be a part of, you know, helping realize your comprehensive plan. And, you know, I uniquely qualified the tab, you know, the tools. So um. The next.
Even she came back and went through it and she's like, oh, I know you do something good with it. She's come by anytime, but um, yeah, she, she even, even blended it.
Down to any minor issues with what they're proposing, you know, long, they're long, I usually can find something reasonable.
So then I guess what we're gonna do is fill out a site plan. Application, a real site application, site plan application, um, so. I didn't catch, I already said at the beginning, are you saying that you are under. Um, so then. Building permit. Application with Ed. Or have current. Submit a payment application. And then Ed will go through and start making the determination on. What um, specific. Is requiring, need any variances, if you need a specially used format, if you need a site. So he's the gateway to the strong. Yes, okay. So, so start with him when you have. So I should probably come up with. A inventory plan at a parking layout. First step of the parking. I, I would even for that, call them, I mean, ask them what people would want to make. To start to make determination. I can come even, he doesn't, he's not in on Saturday, he is going to be in on Saturdays until I think. Or. Whatever. For the last Saturday. Okay. Bye.
You should, you should be the one that lines again, because I think you're over at there.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
What does it say, per dwelling?
Only five, it's just a space for going, one guest parking space for every two. It looks like a five, it's.
Instead, yeah, okay.
What space is this space?
It's the um, it's, it's the marketplace, it is um. It's per square foot of customer area. So who knows how big the stock.
When she asks.
Exactly. Exactly, so I think what I would do is try to keep some of the garden for the tenants. And do a curb cut and have everybody work except for people with the. The burnt tile, so I'll, I can get with the topography. Um, there is actually sex. The parking is open in the office, the part of yours. So. We might ask our, you're, you're on setback, which isn't gonna bother anyone, is it? So. I'm arguing with you a very, sorry. So. Nobody is.
Yeah, I think we get rid of.
That's dangerous with, you know, young kids.
If, if there is a young family who, yeah, who wouldn't love that. Pardon? Yeah. It's, yes, yes, that's true, it is.
I, I looked at driving in and through, you'd have, you'd have to go. Trigree magnificent, it's all a little bit back there, I don't wanna cut down.
No, no, leave those.
So, uh, this, two disconnected parking lots, I think it's okay.
We may try to leave some of the garden, it's just the garden, you can't. Cause it's so pretty. Yeah, she's, she, uh, Annie did a lot of work on that.
And talk to your engineer, just notice you have a leeching.
Yeah.
Talking about.
Yeah, I already had about it too, and we're in that existing septic thing. So um. Shall I leave these or shall I? Documents, the comprehensive plans were. I brought them all in.
Bye, thank you, thank you.
Alright.
So continue to consult as well. So the court continued, both counsel, Jen, so I consulted, what, uh, they five? Hold on, maybe five? Yeah. Well, as far as ERC, I remember, just briefly. I think it just said.
Yesterday. I made a couple corrections.
I did.
Yeah, other than that, they were great.